All right.
Come up on the way. The one thing I don't know is where.
You never know.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the last zoning commission meeting, which is November 13th, 2025. It's a regular meeting of the zoning commission held at 7:00 PM in room 133 of Brookfield Town Hall and streamed live on YouTube. If you all stand up and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good night, good night.
I think it's the early voting, I think they moved over there.
First off, the members of the zoning commission present here this evening introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Daniseo Fontana, alternate.
Gwen Arment, member.
Kurt Timmerman, chair.
Matt Grimes, secretary.
Shaun Turner, member.
Greg Petri, alternate.
Also present this evening is our CEO Fran Holly, Fran Lolly, our land use director Laura Barkowski, and our recording secretary Elizabeth Adams. Tonight, since Tony's not here yet, Daniseo Fontana will be a voting member.
Until he comes in.
Until he comes in. All right, so the first thing on the agenda, review correspondence. We got a notification from town of Bethel. It's funny, because I was reading it, is that they made an amendment when their own P&amp;Z put an application in for a zoning reg change, and it's pretty much like our other ones, except I noticed that they don't need to notify their neighbors. I thought that was odd.
I will say this, Bethel, among all the municipalities, has had very hot activity lately over there.
Yeah. So I don't, I guess they don't want to cut their expenses or something.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2025, as submitted.
All right, do I have a second? Thank you, Matt.
Second.
Thank you, Gwen. Any amendments to the minutes as written?
I guess we got a couple of the squares, I guess, on the thing.
Yeah.
The electronic one was okay, so we're gonna go with that, I guess.
Anybody see any issues? Call in favor of the amended minutes. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Your vote in.
And that was unanimous?
Yep.
There's no continued public hearings, and tonight we have one public hearing, 18 Junction Road, so I have my script here. This is a regular meeting of the Brookfield Zoning Commission. At this point in our agenda, we have a scheduled public hearing concerning the application of Rocco Sala, 18 Junction Road, Brookfield, Connecticut, application Z-25-55 for a special permit, application excavation/fill permit to add, application to add 150 cubic yards of fill to property. Again, I'll have the members of the commission here introduce themselves, including their voting status, starting from my left.
Daniseo Fontana, alternate.
They're voting, yeah.
Gwen Arment, member.
Kurt Timmerman, chair.
Matt Grimes, secretary.
Shaun Turner, member.
Greg Petri, alternate.
All right, thank you. We will open this public hearing by calling the commission secretary to read the legal notice of this hearing.
Well, we got it postponed. Yeah. This was published in the News Times on October 31st and November 10th, 2025. Legal notice, the Brookfield Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in room 133 of Town Hall, 100 Pocono Road, at 7:00 PM on 11/13/25 for special permit, an excavation fill permit, application Z-25-55, owner slash applicant, Rocco Sala, 18 Junction Road, for 150 cubic yards of fill and grading. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications received. Files are available for inspection at the Brookfield Town Hall Land Use Office.
All right, thank you, Matt. This application was formally received by the commission on October 23rd, 2025. Public hearing is only one aspect of the approval process, and is for the purposes of accepting factual information and data bearing on this application, and to express it, to allow expression of opinion by interested parties. Subsequent to this hearing, the commission has 65 days in which to render a decision on this proposal. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved as stipulations, or denied. After reading into the record the correspondence received by the commission relative to the application, we will ask the applicant to present the application in detail. The presentation will be limited to 45 minutes. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification concerning the applicant's presentation. We will hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Comments must be limited to five minutes. Members of the public will have one opportunity to speak during this segment of the hearing, and may also submit their concerns in writing during the public hearing. During this segment, the commissioners may ask additional questions. The bylaws of the commission allow for only the presentation of similar positions in succession, and preclude the intermixture of comments, pro or con. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. As you are recognized, please state your name and address, so your comments may be legally recorded. Be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the commission is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of the time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. After the public comments are received, the applicant have the opportunity to comment, and the time will be limited to 10 minutes. Are there any questions on the rules? We shall now, let's see, do we have any correspondence? I don't think so.
I don't think there is.
We just have all the returned mailers from the, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, sure is. All right, so can you approach, say your name and address for the record?
Rocco Sala, 18 Junction Road.
Let me get the microphone, please.
Sorry. Rocco Sala, 18 Junction Road.
And why don't you tell us what your application is for today, the details?
So, the application is actually after the fact, I took a bunch of fill to the Mr. Lolly was notified, so he, you know, came out, we spoke. He asked me to, so I took advantage of having somebody that had material available. I was filling in a hole in the backyard, excuse me. So I didn't know I needed a permit to do that work, so Mr. Lolly went out to the property. He asked me to stop what I was doing, and actually go through the procedure of the application for the permit, which I did. You know, we stopped. It wasn't detrimental that I took the fill, it was just an opportunity, so I had no problem stopping taking any more. I, after filling out the application, I also provided information on how it affected the property as far as contours and grading. I also did erosion control, you know, items, just to make sure that it wasn't gonna wash through the property, and knowing the source of the material, I also knew that it was clean material. I had it tested just for a second time, just to make sure, and I could provide the documentation to the town. And basically, that's it. I'm not looking to fill anymore. As you said, I was more or less just taking opportunity of available material, and that the property could use some fill, just to make my usable property a little bit more usable. There's a significant drop in the property from where my house is to the lower part of the property. It wasn't dumped anywhere where it was near any property lines, or anybody else's property, and I also investigated, I'm aware of, any protected species or wetlands, and it wasn't affecting that as well. So really, at this point, it's just asking me to, allowing me just to let the fill stay that I brought in.
How many yards did you bring in?
It was about 150 yards.
Are you gonna bring any more in?
No, I wasn't intending on it. I mean, ideally, at some point, if I need, you know, if an opportunity arises, I may apply to do that. At some point, I'd like to try to develop or better the property, there's a lot of ledge, so at some point, I might try, but at this point, I'm good.
And what's holding this, I mean, I see you drew a contour line here.
So it's basically just showing that it extended the, that elevation.
Yeah.
But it basically was just pushing it off an embankment, so, you know, it kind of extended the grade, the elevation that was closer to the elevation of my house.
So around 450?
Approximately.
Something like that. And what's holding up, I mean, I see this line, but, you know, it's a very steep gradient.
Nothing was holding it up before, it was just a natural grade, so it was.
Was this like the angle reposed for that material? It's just?
It's just, like, just, as you said, it's just the natural grade of the property, and I also just planted seed and growing grass, just to stabilize it from wanting to wash away.
So right now, you have, of course, on the edge of this is sloping down.
It's sloping, and like you said, the existing property, as I, when I purchased it, was also like that, it's just a drop in grade. There's no, like, retaining walls or anything holding it up.
No, all right.
It's just going with the natural contours.
However, however, their dirt fell and stood.
It more or less took the shape, it just, you know, moved it out a little bit.
What's the size of your property?
It's 2.38, I think, acres, so I guess there was more than the middle of the property.
I see it's close to your house there.
It'll butt that condo complex.
Yeah, behind you, I guess, there's the Ledgewood condos.
Yeah, at the back, we've got my couple of neighbors right here.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I know you said you didn't know about the rules, and that's one thing I wish we get out there, that there are rules, like, don't dig, don't cut trees, don't do anything.
I do understand.
Because we've had another issue of someone dumping 800 cubic yards, and that's been going on for a couple of years, so I'm glad we caught this, so we could make.
No, and I'm fine with that, I'll even sort of like.
If we were to turn this down, what would you have to do?
For the future, I'll definitely, for the proper permits.
The other thing that comes up, and we were concerned about another, another application like this, it was the dirt. You mentioned you got it tested, but I guess, I see the test report here, complete environmental testing, but who took the samples to be tested?
I did.
See?
So, yeah, well, it was from, like, it happened to be a construction project that I was in charge of, so I just had the samples, you know, so not a third party, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, and that's what we like, and we, you know, not that we don't trust you.
Understood.
But we had other applications who didn't.
No, I.
So we don't know where the samples were taken.
The independent train of custody is very important.
No, no, that I understand. I was trying to be proactive, and just, you know, provide as much information as I had.
And the dirt that you got, the fill that you got?
Yeah.
Do you have it listed in here from whom you got it?
It's on the back page.
It's, yeah, I think, no, yeah. Who did you, do you have something from the person you got the fill from?
Meeting.
As to what they claim it was?
Bill of sale?
Yeah.
I don't have that, I could try to get that, but it's really, it was on a construction project that I was doing, like, that I was in charge of, and it was a site contractor, so I know who the contractor is.
Yeah.
And like I said before, I had test results prior to even considering it at my house, because I was in charge of the project, so then I just, like you said, I got another batch of test results, not just for documentation for the town.
So you got this dirt from another job you were doing?
A job site, and it was extra dirt. Correct.
And you took the advantage of.
They needed a place to get rid of it, for lack of a better word, and I needed, I could use it, so.
I guess it would be good to know from where this dirt came from, so we can at least have an initial assessment of, you know.
Yeah.
What sort of fill it is, you know. Clean fill has a definition, and we just want to make sure it's okay.
Okay. I mean, I don't know what, how you, you know, if you want me to hire.
Well, the complicating factor is that this is the last meeting of the zoning commission that roll over to the plan and zoning, I don't see a problem.
Could we call a special meeting via Zoom or something like that, just to?
Between now and?
Yeah, we could, I mean, next Wednesday or Thursday or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, that would get it out of the way, and it wouldn't take that long.
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, what's the procedure, and how we would?
So ordinarily, ordinarily, probably, we would have left this public hearing open, we would be having a meeting in two weeks, and we would ask you to come back with independent samples, and what the chairman's talking about, but, because this is, this commission ceases to exist after the 30th of this month, we're trying to figure out a way to kind of accommodate you before the turnover, because.
Yeah, we can have an extra special meeting if we want, if we have enough time for that.
I have no problem with being electronic if we want.
What's the lead time to a special meeting?
Electronic or 40 hours?
40, okay.
So we can make it next Thursday or something like that.
Yeah.
Do you know where the dirt came from?
Yes.
Was it in State?
Yes, in Norwalk.
Norwalk.
Can I have the address of that?
164 West Cedar Street.
It was a job site you were working on, right?
It was, yes. It was a housing development.
Is this mainly dirt they excavated from there?
Yes, it was excavation from buildings, so it was just dirt that had to get removed from the site.
Right.
It was, there was housing on the dirt?
We built housing. It was an open site, it was a vacant site, about seven acre site, and we built public housing on it.
And nothing had been built on it before?
Nothing had been built on it before.
That's important. It's not a brownfield site.
Right. Amazingly, there was that big of a piece of property in Norwalk that was undeveloped.
That part of Colonial Village now, then?
That exactly, the Oak Grove site. Are you familiar with the property?
Is there any other questions from the commission? Is there any questions of clarification from the audience?
I think.
If you want a question of clarification, if you want to come up to this podium and say your name and address. These are just questions of clarification, I'll be going, you know, for and against in a minute.
Okay. Susan Farrell at 35 Ledgewood Drive, and I think we're here tonight just to think about drainage, if there will be a drainage problem off of doing the fill. I think that's all, clarification on that, how do we assess that, and?
Yeah, that's, I don't know how we assess that, you know, we're usually, how much dirt goes on, we would have to get a drainage report, that's the sort of thing we'd get.
You do?
We would have to request one.
Okay.
I mean, we're not experts ourselves, we request, we either ask for one, or?
So is your question, you want to know how the drainage is gonna work on the property?
How do you?
If it impacts the condominium association from that side. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Does, I'm sorry, can I?
Yeah.
Does the property go down to your condo?
I don't think it, his property does not, it's more side by side, it doesn't, I don't think it rolls into our yard, but it goes parallel.
So, I mean, there's, there's a significant distance, amount of property at that lower, at that lower grade, before it gets to the property line of the Ledgewood properties, and there's no legitimate drainage issues on the property, and for the amount of fill that was added, it doesn't really change like the course of drainage, so, you know, we're not damming up and creating it going anywhere other than the natural path of drainage. I mean, there's no drainage system on the property, it's just a, you know.
I guess, if I look at the topo maps, I would, my naive interpretation would say, yeah, you're right, but I'm not a hydrologist or?
No, I understand, I'm just, you know, I know the path of what water does come, and most of it comes, since I'm at the lower part of Junction Road, of the top of the road, it mostly just comes down my driveway, and then, and then it goes past, and then it goes off the side, more on the, I think it's 16 is the lower side?
I can see it, there's a swell, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that part is all, like, unaffected, you know, that's the front of the property.
Yeah.
Have you had any backup of water?
I have, I haven't, but Susan has, I think, there are.
If you, if you could.
Yeah.
But I think.
This is just for clarification, if you want to clarify her question.
Susan Dodd, 37 Ledgewood Drive, in High Meadow Complex. I have had water in my house, and there are other spots in the community that have drainage, so, and right on Ledgewood Drive, between our building and 133, we've actually, there's a whole pathway of stones that they were helping to create some drainage in there. So we do have drainage issues, not all over the place, if it's got anything to do, because I'm actually, Rocco, I don't really know where your property is, except that it's on the other side, you know, behind me, or what that property looks like, but we do have drainage issues, and just don't want to make it worse.
Okay.
Did you have the drainage issue before the dirt was put in?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, I don't have water or.
All right, thank you.
Water drainage issue on the property, it's not what it's sitting.
Okay, you get back up to the microphone.
Sorry, I forgot about the microphone, so.
Our public hear everything.
My property doesn't, like, hold water, nor does it, you know, have rivers running through it. Again, you can see on the, on the topographical map.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it, I don't see adding that dirt, it's just following the same contour lines as the other ones.
Exactly.
Same water's gonna end up in the same place.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions, a clarification from the audience? Okay. And does anybody like to speak in favor of this application?
Just me.
Thank you. Anybody like to speak in opposition? All right. What does the commission think about having a special meeting, say, next, I won't be available on Thursday, that's the problem, but how about next Wednesday? We could do it remote or something like that?
Yeah.
Same time, next Wednesday?
Seven o'clock.
Same time Wednesday?
Yeah, more earlier or later, because I can be here before seven.
Yeah, we could do it same time or later, yeah. It's only gonna be this one application.
Yeah, and we're leaving the public hearing open for the purposes of obtaining soil samples?
So, yeah, how do we?
That's the question, do we, you know, soil samples or?
I think we need to get independent, because if we allow him to submit it, then we're gonna allow future applicants to submit their own, and we've had problems with that before.
You know, though, it sounds like the.
No offense to you.
Where the dirt came from sounds clean, because it was a new construction site.
Nothing had been built there, it wasn't cement, it wasn't clumps of asphalt.
But on the other, but the other hand, we're asking this from another applicant, and we have to be consistent.
Yes.
So that's, yeah.
Very true. So how long does that take?
Tonight, and then?
No, no.
Having on, projecting that the dirt is clean, like?
No, no, you can't do that.
Well.
If it's not clean, then it's null and void.
You could do that if we were approving the application, but you can't, gotta leave, because we got an open public hearing, you have to leave the public hearing open for the purposes of getting that, so you can't do that.
Yeah, so that's data we need to include in our deliberations, and so, you know, that data's gonna be gathered after, and it would be inadmissible once we close the public hearing.
Can we, can we get it in time?
Yeah, I would say so.
That would, it'd be a week, we'd have to be someone like CCA or Enviro.
CCA could get it done in a week, I'm sure.
You have to check this out.
Yeah. And we?
We have to turn over from other companies.
Yeah, Enviro, Enviro. Enviro, that's where we got from the last time.
And last time I went out with them, and I was there for the samples, where they were taken.
Yeah.
And I supervised the sample.
Okay.
And you also looking for documentation as to where the soil came from?
Yeah, so two things I think we'd like submitted, you know, some, some letter from where you got the dirt from.
Who would provide that?
The general contractor on that job.
Probably the general contractor.
I was the general, I was the site superintendent.
You'd probably need to submit an affidavit then, to that effect.
Yeah.
So you just, you want me to write the affidavit?
Yeah, say, say.
Yeah, and get an order.
I understand, okay.
And then, the same, the same report.
Yes.
But someone, a third party, taking the, taking the samples.
Which would be?
Which would be witnessed by Fran Lolly, our Z.
So, do I hire the company?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a matter of scheduling them to come out? Okay.
And then, we would like to try to schedule a meeting next Wednesday.
If we could get that done in that quick of time, which, I don't know if it's not possible.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, if possible, we could push it back to, like, I don't know, two Thursdays from now, how's that sound?
Thanksgiving.
Is it possible not to get the sample, the results back by next Wednesday?
I would think, they turn it around.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. So I'll motion to recess the public hearing on application Z-25-55 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, November 19th, for the purpose of obtaining independent soil samples and documentation as to where the, the source of the fill came from, to the construction site.
Great, thank Matt.
Second.
Thank you, Gwen. Any other discussion on this motion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, just so I'm 100% clear, after the test results, that the permit is approved?
No, then, then you bring it?
Well, I meant after we meet.
Well, yes, and then we.
Entered to the record.
Yeah, we entered to the record, we would close the public hearing, because we finally get your data.
Right, okay.
And then we deliberate, we sit here and talk about it, and then we make a decision that same night.
I understand.
Your dirt's not going anywhere, so.
Not going anywhere.
Can I ask when it was installed?
It was back in May, I think, at this point, it's just.
Put the date down in your affidavit, maybe?
Yeah, the doc, the test results, or the testing that I had done was after, was shortly after.
Oh, May 22nd.
The original, yeah.
Remember, this had been on our agenda for many months, and then it was incomplete.
It kept moving, yeah, I apologize for that.
That's all right. All right, so, so we'll see you, or we'll talk to you next Wednesday.
Okay, so.
So you coordinate with Fran on him being the witness of the sample taken.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to make the arrangements tomorrow, and we'll see how your schedule works.
Yeah, whatever, we've got to come in over the weekend, again, I'm done.
Yeah, let me, let me reach out to testing agency tomorrow.
All right, and then the, your affidavit, you know, to forget to get it authorized after you.
Okay.
You just have the date and the amount, when you took it.
I understand.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you called the motion, or did you call the motion?
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
I think I did, I think I called the motion. So we're double.
Or is the meeting for next week, is their phone number up and notified, or is there some way to pull that up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the, on the website?
Yeah, we'll get it, I'll work it for you.
Let the record show, Tony Papucci has entered the meeting, and he's now seated again, and Daniseo is back to the alternate. Welcome, Tony.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
It happens.
All right, there's no old business, there's no new business, and the other things were proposed, changes to short term, oh, did you bring us something?
I did.
Oh, excellent.
I did not bring a lot, though.
Oh, okay.
I brought five copies, and I can make more. This is basically what the shores, it's ironic, because the shores.
I can share your copy, Tony.
Stamp one in for the rec. Yeah, I was gonna say, not gonna be used anymore. They basically take part of the town's information and part of their own, which is actually pretty interesting, that they're splitting between the two. So they do reference the town's short-term charter, or the recs. The recs.
Yep.
And their forms, and then they also have their own, which pretty much falls in line with what we've kind of discussed through the meetings.
Is there anything tight, more restrictive in the Shores?
No.
So they just reference back to ours.
Correct.
To, uh, the towns.
Correct, it's comparable to, to what.
Yours is fourteen days or less.
Correct. There, there, there's, yeah, but that's, but the fourteen days also then goes back to the town. If it, and they literally took half of the town's.
I see.
Recs, and dovetailed it to their own, which is the reason why.
Are you talking about this first page?
Yeah.
Because this is just a reference to ours.
Right, but.
So it's not theirs, actually, it's just.
So when we change ours. They're going to have to change theirs.
So the short term is fourteen days or less, the short term, fourteen days or more is long term?
Correct, in the Shores.
In the Shores.
And in the town of Brookfield right now.
Oh, correct.
The fourteen days or less, you only could do it so many, you can't do it all year round.
Three times, three.
Three times in six months.
But if you do it fourteen days or more, you can do it all year round.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Fifteen, yeah.
So that's the same as Shores, and the same as the town.
Basically, yes.
Correct.
But that's what it is now, isn't it?
Yeah, oh, yes, that's, that's.
Not.
So the reason he, I asked him to bring him in, because Glenn had brought in the Kentwood Lake Clubs, which are more restrictive than, than the towns.
Yeah.
And so, upon hearing that the Shores had their own, I want, I asked Tony to bring his in to see what theirs looked like, so we could, you know, we don't want to create confusion for one thing, when we come up with our new ones, but we also like these models of what other parts of the community has done.
Slowing regulations never create confusion.
Correct, and, looking at the zones. Right now, the regs for short-term rentals for the town, or for the entire town.
Yeah.
If we break it out into the zones, because the lake communities might have a, somebody might have a property that they want to do, from an investment property, to rent. So tying that together, if we're going to possibly go to a zone, take those zones, which might be rented more versus just a, a regular house in the cit-, you know, anywhere in the town that could rent, that's also the reason why we were looking at the stipulations, which again, that's where, um, Kentwood Lake Club and the Shores do have restrictions. Again, three rentals in a six-month window. Now, they could be one rental or three rentals, but again, there's tied to occupancy and all this other stuff.
So the ones we're putting forth, we were looking to make the term longer, what short term meant, in this case, thirty days or shorter, that becomes a new short term. Um, and so, uh, and that's in, in cons- that's, uh, uh, let, reconciles with the states. The state considers short-term thirty days or less.
Correct.
And so we thought, well, maybe that's a good thing to be like them. Um, some other ideas that we had was how many people can be in there, we're talking about, um, two adult guests per bedroom and any associated children, so we were discussing that, um, and you have in your package.
That's what it says right here, also.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, so.
That, that, that's what I was talking about, they, they have actually referenced some of the stuff.
Mm-hmm, of the town.
Yeah.
The town attorney has actually done some red lines on, on what we had initial language, so we could, so he could put his two cents in, which would probably cost a lot more than that.
It costs a lot more than two cents. Right.
And, um, and the other thing we asked him was, just an idea about zones, because right, as Tony mentioned, it's the same for all the towns. Um, but we recognize that the lake rentals tend to be maybe more used, as for short-term than not, um, but having sort of an area in a, in town, that didn't work too well legally, but doing it by zone did, and it turns out, uh, most of the houses on the lake earns, are seven zones. And, and because they're such small lots, I think it becomes more imperative to, to protect the security and safety and the neighborhood feel of those, because you're crammed so much together. In what way? That's what we were going to kind of throw around and try to figure out, uh, because, you know, do we want to make it a little more restrictive in the R-seven zones, or conversely, do we want to make it less restrictive outside the R-seven zones? Because if you're in like an R-eighty or an R-forty, you know, is it going to be that disruptive, uh, because you're further away from people, say.
The, the level of restriction, I think, is directly related to how clear the regulation is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because also, the, the, the level of restriction also, i- i- it's, we don't have the resources to police a regulation that is all over the map.
Yeah.
Correct.
Even one that's clear, we don't really have the resources to police.
And that's a good segue.
I know that, I know that Lauren and Fran are just dying to do this.
That's a good segue into this idea of enforcement, because enforcement's hard, hard to do. Uh, so I did, you'll see it in your package, I did write a letter over to both Steve Dunn and the Chief of Police regarding information sharing, to at least do another step of enforcement, and it was the idea of information sharing. We, the land, the Land Use Office knows who's renting, or at least it's the legal people. And so if we can share that with the police, if they get a call out for noise or something or else, we can, they can know if they're going to a particular property, oh, those are renters there. So you're not probably going to find the owner, you're going to find some renters, and, and then they can feedback, yes, you know, they were breaking the rules, you know, because they're not supposed to have parties or things like that. But the other thing I asked, the other piece of information to flow back is, if you go to a, a, um, a property and find, and ask them, and they say, hey, we're just renting the place, please feed that back to us, because, or back to the Land Use Office, because then they can start an enforcement action if it's not an approved short-term rental. So that's another way to discover it, because I'm sure the police go and, you know, shut down parties in the summer, maybe on the lake or anywhere, and, um, these people, if they're renting, they're, you know, and they're not on the, you know, having filed a permit, then, you know, they need to have an enforcement action of some sort.
Short-term only, if it's.
Short-term only. Short-term only, correct.
Yes, it is only short-term.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to backtrack a little bit to what you said about the size of the property.
Yeah.
I also brought in, uh, the, the regulations for properties I have in, in Colorado, and those.
Oh, okay.
I, I brought them in. Um, they're pretty restrictive.
Yeah.
And those properties are anywhere from seven acres to sixty-six acres.
Oh, all right.
And most of them are in the thirty-five acres. So, um, they were having a lot of trouble with renters, and their rent, their, their short-term, maybe, their restriction is at least six months. That's it.
Oh, that's the.
Yeah, because.
You can't have anything less than six months.
Can't have anything less than six months, yeah. Um, of course, they worry about fire here, at the top of a mountain, and, uh, but parties and, and, and drag racing and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
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 So, uh, I'm not sure that it, it should be that different for a larger property or a smaller one.
Okay. Yeah.
Just saying.
Well, you know, to your point, at, what is it, forty, forty Hidden Brook, is that there, or thirty-two? What's the one in Hidden Brook?
Forty.
Forty? Um, that's a two-acre property, I think, they're in R-eighty zone, so there's been, neighbors have had issues with the short-term rental, they're illegal ones, uh, because they're on our enforcement report, and so, yeah, maybe it doesn't matter.
Right.
It can be annoying, you know, and ruin the neighborhood feeling.
You don't, you don't know who's in there.
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Speaking of your letter, the two cents, we actually already heard back from the Chief of Police.
Okay.
And he called in response to it, was more than happy to work with us and information share.
Oh, great, all right.
Cool.
And I think it would help them, you know, assess the situation going in, know what to expect.
That would help, so.
Yeah, so, well, that's good. Yes.
Um, regarding the, uh, there's, there's stipulat- or, or language in there about people staying on the, at the property. Is there, that won't necessarily eliminate the idea of somebody has a party, but next to none of them are actually staying at the property?
Well, the only one thing that we had to restrict, or at least we put in here, is no events, no big party.
Correct, and on top of that, we've called out occupancy. So.
Yes.
Again.
So that's clearly.
It's two per, it's two, where it gets gray is kids. And we've identified kids at a certain age and younger, but it's two per. So if you've got a four-bedroom house, that's eight people, you have twelve people, you're exceeding the occupancy of the house, even if they're coming and going or visiting and stuff like that.
Yeah, so it's clearly stipulated, it's not just staying at, it's.
Yeah.
And how old do you have to be to rent?
We didn't stipulate that, that's actually a good point.
Yeah.
Because you could have a bunch of twenty-year-olds or eighteen-year-olds.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So, um, just so you, this, this, all this will go forward to the P and Z, and by the way, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so we'll roll over into that thing, so we don't have to finish it tonight. Uh, the other.
But it's, it's definitely tightened from where it was, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I, I was, so we should go look over the red lines, know that the police are now willing to do that. Now, that creates, I don't know how much more work that creates for you guys.
I mean, it's, you're also, now that you've got a special meeting this week, you could tack this on if we've got a, a revised draft by then.
Yeah.
If you want, you know.
Right.
Might as well. All right. Motion to continue to, uh, November nineteenth.
I'll second.
All right, all right, uh, thank you, Matt, thank you, Tony, all in favor of continuing this discussion to November nineteenth?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And the, we're into commissioners, uh, where are we now? Discussions? Oh, um, I just wanted, there's something in your, I was in your packet, the HRRA, um.
Oh, my, that is.
Oh, yes, that's next to the glass thing. So the HRRA is dropping off the, well, they dropped one off, um, before they knew that they had to ask permission. But, uh, this is a composting thing that you have to sign up for, it's a pilot program, and we wanted to catch it before they just started populating these things all over town, because you just can't put them anywhere. You have to ask, see if the, if they're worth the.
In New York, we have to now, each tenant has to have their little compost pla-.
Mm-hmm.
Container in their apartment.
Yeah.
And then you have to have a plastic container outside for all of them to put their, and that's picked up, yes.
Once a week.
Once a week. So who brings compost to this?
The, uh, the people who pay the, what is it, ten dollars?
It's ten dollars, and there's an, it's apron.
Yeah, so you have to pay for the privilege to bring your compost there.
Yes.
So you log in via the app, it opens the thing, you throw it in.
Yeah, and then I watch it, the way you throw it in there.
You have access to the compost from that.
Is, and they're going to set these green things up around town?
They've already won.
They already did.
They, they, they did one.
I know, one, but they want to do.
So, so the zoning issue here is, you know, does it, what about signage, is there anything about signage, what about placement? Now, this is on municipal, does it fall under deodorant, it's for a food truck, this is like the opposite of food, it's like the other side, discarded food. But, uh, so, things that we have to look at in our, in our.
You have to pay to put your compost.
Yes.
Yes.
In here.
There you go.
Yes.
Who thought it?
I don't know, but he's a genius.
The HRRA, and he's the Tonic Resource and Public Authority.
I guess if you got, I guess if you got sick and you had the app, you could throw up in it.
I'm almost there.
No, 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 no.
My battery as well.
If you, if you, if you mapped where they were, and you.
It was done by an educated garbage man.
Now, I don't know if you realize, but food trucks on, on town property are regulated by the First Selectmen's Office.
They are, yeah.
Outside, the, outside municipal properties regulated by the zoning commission, so I thought this might be similar.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I.
Plus, they, but they also, they, they also do have Health Department requirements, too.
Yeah, 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 top of that. So it's just food for thought, so to speak. All right, any other announcements? And I just want to thank everybody who's been on the commission all these years. Um, this is our last meeting, so it's, it's been a fun ride on the zoning commission, and, uh, it's a sad day that this is it.
I'm sad that there's, oh, well, you have females on the.
No, that's unfortunate.
None?
Well, there's two alternate spots.
Nobody ran. Yeah, there's two alternates.
Oh.
Open.
Really?
Yeah, so, they have to be appointed.
So, since, um.
I, I did, I wanted to say something, though, about our discussion last time about the cell towers. And, uh, Pasca talked about being an intervenor, I wanted to clarify that anybody can be for the town.
Yeah.
Of making a case in front of the Siding Council.
All right.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
And by the way, speaking of the cell tower, they are doing floating a balloon.
Yes.
Eight AM on Saturday, down a, in a forty-two-way Hidden Brook Ri- Road, one hundred seventy-five feet up, so you can.
Take pictures.
This, this Saturday.
Just take pictures.
This Saturday, yeah.
If you're, like, in the historic district. Close to the lake, any lake, Lake Villanova.
Since, since this is like a funeral, I got a little bit of the eulogy, zoning commission, if I could.
Oh, God.
Matt, I give you the floor.